I'm calling this regular meeting of the Virgin City Council to order, August 28th at 5:30. Would everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amendments to the agenda. There's one amendment to the agenda which will be 5J, and it is reimbursement for deferred pension for city manager. And that's the exiting city manager, not the incoming city manager. Visitors. Well, we have a few, but does any visitor -- no, we don't have any schedule, sorry. I always do that. Approval of minutes. And I need a motion for approval of minutes for August 10th and August 14th.
I'll make the motion to approve both sets of minutes.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Are there any amendments to the minutes?
I'd like to make a small change to the minutes of August 10th. In the second to the final paragraph, it says, "Mr. Chabot stated he wanted to expose." I'd prefer we said, "reveal" that information to "expose."
And actually, on that one, I have a change in the second line, if I'm doing this right. And it says, "The purpose of the meeting is," probably should be "was," "to discuss potential candidates." Okay, that's on the minutes of August 10th. What about minutes of August 14th? Any amendments to that? I have one, if nobody else has any. Okay. In the mayor's report, first line, it talks about the Second Annual Ead on the Green, and it says, "Sponsored by the Virgin's Partnership." I prefer to have the word "coordinated" because it's not really a sponsor. Other than that, I don't have any changes. So, we have a motion on the floor. Minutes as slightly amended. Any further? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Citizens' comments. This is the one that I should always ask, whether there's somebody out there. There are a few people out there. Citizens' comment.
Yes, I have just two brief announcements. On September 13th at 7:00 PM at the Virgin's Opera House, the Planning Commission will be holding a public forum, and everybody's invited. You will be seeing it in front porch forum, maybe in the paper, all over the place. Basically, we're updating the municipal development plan, and there are some areas where we want some public feedback. So, we've got some door prizes to entice people to come. Everybody is welcome. Hope to see you there. And then also, on September 26th at 7:00 PM, again at the Opera House, V-Trans and StanTech are holding a public hearing on the Route 22A truck route study. And so, it's very important for us to give our feedback on what we think the direction of that ought to go. So, I would strongly encourage people to attend that as well. Thank you.
Any other comments from anyone? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to 5A. And let's see. Appointment of aldermen. And so, at this point, we'll get comments from the three candidates who are vying for that position. They are Jill Murray-Killen, Randy Holet, and there's Jill, and David Small. And so, I will call these in alphabetical order to make any comments that the candidates would like to make, and answer any questions. And so, the first one we will start with is Jill Murray-Killen. It's your opportunity to make a few comments to us. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Make any comments you would like, as far as why you want to be on the city council, and answer any questions, if there are any, from the city council.
Sure. I, as I stated in my letter of intent, I've been living in Virgin's for about 15 years now. I've enjoyed seeing the city blossom and improve with different restaurants and retail spaces. And I just think it's a nice place to live. We have a young son that's going to be starting school tomorrow. And what was the rest of it? What do I have to -- what else do you want to add here?
Just any comment about why you want to be on the city council?
I just think it'd be interesting to be a part of the decisions that are made in the council, and to have a little bit of hand in the running of the city. Questions?
Does anyone have any questions? Jill?
What would you say are some of the biggest challenges facing the city?
From reviewing some of the minutes today, it looks like there's some budgetary issues that need to be dealt with, as I'm sure are the case in most cities. Yeah, that was one of the biggest issues I think I saw.
How would you approach it?
Probably just hearing out all sides, see what people want and what they need, and best way to figure out how money gets allocated.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Jill.
Great.
And the next one is Randy Holet.
Hi, everybody. I don't know if everybody knows me or not. I'm Randall Holet. I've been a member of this community for 30 years. I have served on this board from 2004 to 2014. 10 years. Six of those 10 years, I was as deputy mayor. The reason why I want to get back onto the board, I can see that there's been some real challenges that have come our way that need to be addressed. And I always had a head for this type of stuff, and I think I would be an asset, and I can hit the ground running. I'm ready to go to work.
Any questions of Randy?
We have the same question.
Well, budgetary concerns, and one of the other hot buttons that came across that I thought about was the recycling issue about the having the pickup down there in the Falls area. The other thing is just budgets. We have to -- there's always a difference between want and need. And we have to do -- there's some things that we need to do, and there's some things that we might want to do. So, we have to separate out the wants from the needs.
Give me some examples of wants versus needs.
Well, everybody wants curbs and sidewalks, more or less. I mean, there's always a need for more money to be spent on fluff stuff. And I'm having a hard time describing the fluff stuff. But I mean, we've gone through and replaced a lot of the sidewalks in this community. There's still a few more to go. People want that done. Paving issues. You know, the streets are rough, but you live with it. You deal with it until we can afford to do it.
Do you consider the recreation budget a fluff?
Well, the pool is a big part of this community. And I know that has been -- it had been running when I was on the board. It was pretty net neutral. We had reduced the amount of money that we were putting in as a board. And I'll be honest, I haven't looked at it then. But that pool is important to the -- is very important to this community. The other things, I'm not very well up on. When I left the board, I kind of left the board.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Randy. And the last one, David Small.
Hi, everyone. David Small. I'm new to the Virgin's community. I moved to Virgin's last fall. Bought a house here on South Maple Street, but was very much attracted to Virgin's for seeing the city change in the last bunch of years. I went to Middlebury College, and that's how I found the area. Moved away for about five years and came back. And when I was looking to settle down in a place, chose Virgin's because of its location and the wonderful amenities that Jill mentioned in town, and just being able to integrate into a community that is clearly tight knit and passionate about fostering a great future for its citizens. I believe that with that, frankly, I would be a very fresh, different perspective when it comes to this type of work. I'm completely -- would be completely new to sitting on a city council, and also just thinking, you know, very much about how I see myself developing and kind of becoming a part of this community, and seeing where this community can go over the bunch of years. Things that I very much could see, yeah, I guess for me, it very much would be kind of bringing a perspective to Virgin's of someone frankly coming from the outside and becoming part of the community would be, I think, an asset.
Same questions, Dave?
What do you think are some of the biggest challenges facing the city?
When I bought my house, I had a sewer issue that I had to deal with in order to make the purchase. And in doing so, was talking to a friend of mine who's on planning, and we kind of talked a little bit about it. And I also got a lot of firsthand knowledge of the fact that we had an issue there of sewers not being mapped and conditions not being necessarily known. Talked to Jeff a little bit about that as well, and I know that's something that seems like it's on top of mind for folks. Making Virgin's, increasingly making Virgin's a great place for young families and for young individuals to choose Virgin's as a place to live from the outside, coming down from Burlington or from Middlebury, or even outside of the area. Potentially more remote folks coming in, I think, could be a great opportunity for the city as well.
Okay. No, go ahead.
I have one more question. And I'd like to give all three of the candidates an opportunity to respond. Where do you see the city, say, 10 years from now? That's like the interview question from hell when you apply for a job. Whoever wants to go first?
I would hope that the city is going to continue on the trajectory that it's been on lately, where they've been attracting the businesses that I've said, you know, there's not a lot of empty storefronts. I'd like to see the storefronts that are empty be filled. I see the city gaining a younger population, just the trends that I've witnessed with, you know, younger families coming in, such as Mr. Small's and his family. Assuming, anyway, him. I've noticed that, just because my son is about to start kindergarten, I know that it's a large kindergarten class, which leads me to believe that there's, you know, like I said, a lot of young children, a lot of young families. I'd like it to continue to be fairly safe. I don't ever feel uncomfortable walking around town in all corners of the town by myself, or, you know, with my young son, or, you know. Yeah. And I think that there's been some improvements that have been made. I see that there's some blinking pedestrian signs that have been put in by the police station. I presume the same thing's being put in close to the Opera House, I think. Yeah.
Thank you.
I would say, very much, you know, 10 years from now, being able to balance bringing folks in, not only to harness tourism dollars and getting folks in for the summer and all the outdoor amenities that are surrounding us, but also really balancing it as a place to live and to have families and to grow here. I think focusing on that and being able to balance those two initiatives are super important, and will be, you know, could be a great focus. Also, walkability, bikeability. I know there's the project down at the front and the crosswalks, and just making it a very, making it a place where you could live, work, and play, all within the small city limits, I think, is a fantastic goal.
Thank you.
Where I see Virgin's in 10 years? What I would like to see is the fiduciary responsibility of this council to make sure that all residents can stay in this community, old, young, so that everybody can afford to live here. We can't allow things to get out of control, as far as taxes are concerned, water's concerned, sewer's concerned. I have seen a great number of improvements, the pedestrian lights, the how the street, how the parks look, how our entrances to the city and leaving the city, how nice they are. I see us as a big bone for incoming, hopefully some incoming businesses, or as for the traveled industry, our summer visitors.
So, this is how the process will go this evening, that we are, we will probably go into executive session, but it will be at the end of the meeting. And so, you're welcome to stay through the meeting, if you'd like, or leave. And we will go into executive session to discuss appointments and so on, and come out of executive session and take a vote, a public vote, on whoever the person is going to be. If you're not here, you will be informed by me, probably by an email, because I have another engagement after this, so it'll be late. And so, that's how we will, we will take care of it, because we have a couple of executive session items, and we want to hold it to the end of the meeting so that we don't have to rustle people out of here for a momentary time for us to go through our discussions.
It's fine. I'm going to go eat dinner.
Didn't know I could stick around, and I left, and they still let me be on, so.
So, we go on to item 5B. Schedule public hearing for proposed amendment to the land use map. And I, do you, it would be better if you explained this, rather than me read this whole thing.
Basically, we updated the zoning and subdivision regulations earlier this year. Through an oversight on my part, I grabbed the wrong map when we put it in, and there are two parcels that are, that in our plan are supposed to be a medium -- I'm going to forget what.
They are currently low density.
They're currently low density, and we want them to be medium density, like the surrounding areas. And so, it's really just a formality of adopting the right map that will then put us in conformance with our municipal plan.
Okay, so I need a motion for us to schedule a public hearing for that purpose on September 25th at 6:00 PM in the Virgin's Fire Station. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
The meeting you're having on September 13th?
Because it's a different purpose, you know, our meeting on the 13th is really a brainstorming kind of session. This is a public hearing, which quite frankly, will probably last a minute or less.
I just want to know if there's a reason not to get it.
Well, it has to be, yeah, this is yours. The Planning Commission's already held our public hearing for this process, so it's.
No problem. So, seeing no other comments, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
So, one of the things, you know, obviously, I stopped being zoning administrator and planning commission clerk on the 24th of July, and Peter Garan is in place, and I think relative to him being the clerk, he had to be appointed by the planning commission. And I believe that that has occurred. And so, one of the things, I can tell you that the communication between, obviously, in the past, I was here, so there was really, in theory, there should not have been any confusion about who's communicating with who. So, I can tell you, we got a little bit of a work in progress. So, I took, I took the liberty to write this notice so that it could get on this agenda. And before I go home tonight, Shannon, I'm going to send it to the Addison Independent so that both of us aren't doing the same thing. So, and then, once I'm gone, you'll all figure this, figure this out as to who's doing what. But I'll take care of the, I'll take care of that and the posting requirements as well.
Thank you very much. Before Friday. Okay. Item 5C, ambulance service agreements. That really is going to be deferred probably to the next meeting. You actually approved the, having the agreement, the six month agreement, but there's the next agreement after that also. And we have not received the redone copies of this agreement, and they happen to be ones that the city council actually has to sign. So, until we get those from them, we can't do anything. So, we'll move on to item 5D, amendment to the FY 2019 Police Department budget. And there is some information in your packet. And Mel, you want to take that one over?
Sure. As I mentioned at the last, last meeting, relative to the police department budget, particularly as it relates to replacing the CMV, commercial motor vehicle, and for commercial motor vehicle enforcement. And what I am suggesting is that you actually make some changes to this budget, not the bottom line, but some of the line items to more accurately reflect what we know the costs are going to be. So, the report that George provided with you, I took that report, and let me just explain to you the way that I see this coding occurring. First off, the CMV truck, if you will, the cost from G Stone, as you saw in your report, is a little over $35,000, 35 six or so. The quote from Yipe Stripes, which actually outfits that truck and stripes it, and also, in this case, there is an estimated $768 to decommission the vehicle that is on loan to us from the Sheriff's Department. So, what I would suggest is that when you are invoiced from Yipe Stripes for this vehicle, that if it indeed is $768 to decommission the vehicle, to charge that to police cruiser maintenance and repair, because it's really not, that is not buying a cruiser. It's really decommissioning one of your, so if you take the 35 plus and then take the 14,000 and some change, subtract 768, you get to a number that is just under $50,000. So, that's my suggestion. And in doing so, no other equipment for that new cruiser, i.e. computers, would be charged to that particular line item. The computers for the vehicles, the, I do agree with George to, that bill is in your warrants. It's about $6,900 for two computers for two cruisers. One, one computer would go into the new cruiser. The other computer would be replacing an eight or nine year old computer in, in one of the other cruisers. Out of that $6,900 bill, the state has approved us using $900 of an equipment grant, Governor's Highway Safety, the balance of a Governor's Highway Equipment Grant of $900. We also received asset forfeiture funds of $2,007 and a quarter. I would use that money as well towards that $6,900. The difference, some $4,600, ends up being charged to IT. And I've explained to George that he has to watch that line item carefully to make sure that that $20,000 does not go over budget. So, we still end up with the $5,000, and our recommendation would be to reduce supplies, equipment, postage from $10,000 to $5,000. And the challenge would be to not be making any substantial, obviously, purchases of any other equipment. And relative to uniforms and accessories, the increase from 5 to 12, the line share that increased was due to body cameras, and we're recommending that that line item go from $12,000 to $7,000. I will tell you that, you know, it is our, it's our feeling that body cameras is still a good decision, that it has merit to have, have body cameras, but would suggest, in this instance, to defer that, and not necessarily defer that to next year, but, but to indeed defer it. And if, if you find yourself in May or June, you know, in a position whereby you could make that purchase, you, you could make that decision at that time. But I would suggest that you not purchase body cameras this early in the fiscal year.
And that we, let's see, amend the capital purchases from 40 to 50,000, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I need a motion on making those amendments to the police department budget?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that?
Actually, I have a problem with the body camera. I don't know if I'm saying this, but, you know, I remember, and maybe I'm wrong, I didn't go back and watch the meetings, but I remember one of the discussions on having one car instead of two was the fact that we were looking at body cameras. It was one of the things that was going to be cut to pay for the two cars, and that was discussed, and seemed like, no, that really was something we wanted to have. That was an important and transparency kind of issue in today's world. Body cameras are important to the public, and try and make police feel safer. And so, now we have, we were told $40,000, which now it becomes $50,000, which seems like a pretty significant difference in what happened. And in exchange, we're going to drop one of the things that we were going to save. So, I just, I'm not pleased with how this budget has gotten juggled. And it may be just a deferment for a few months, but I'm just not, it just seems like a shell game.
I was going to ask if George, George agreed with this, you know? I haven't talked to him, so. Does he agree that the body cameras are going to be put on hold?
Well, I'm going to say yes, but also, I want to preface this by talking about the two cruisers, all right? And I can tell you that one of the things, it would have been helpful to get, when George's original memo came in and spoke about two cruisers and $80,000, two things. One is, there really was a very different price between replacing the 2009 unmarked cruiser and the CMV vehicle. So, I think that when, and I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just telling you what the numbers are, but, but it's, obviously, anybody can divide 80,000 by two and get $40,000, and that's what we did, all right? And then, in retrospect, it really was more complicated than that. You know, we, they really were not two of the same thing. They were two very different things. Additionally, I am, I got sticker shock big time with the $14,000 from Yipe Stripes to outfit a cruiser. I mean, and it's not like, and don't think that $14,000 is about putting stickers on the side of a car. I mean, it is cages and consoles, and it's, it is a major undertaking. In the past, we've bought cruisers from MHQ. And when you buy them from MHQ, they are totally outfitted, and your bill is $42,000. Now, you can, the option is to buy a, buy a police package, i.e. cruiser or truck, and have somebody else do the outfitting. And it's George's opinion that it's, makes more sense to buy a vehicle locally than it is wherever MHQ is. I can assure you, it's not in Vermont. And so, going and picking up these cruisers and all that, he feels that it's better to be purchasing it here. Relative to, so let me just tell you, the decision of when, when the city council said, "Only one cruiser," all right? George's initial response was, "Well, then we'll replace, we'll replace the, the unmarked," all right? And I didn't say anything, but I can tell you, I, I never said anything. I disagreed with that, and it just was ironic that the next day, he came in and said, "Mel, I really think that it's better to do this, this CMV." So, really, you didn't have So, really, you didn't have all of this in, information. So, one of the things, Mark, and, and I will tell you that, you know, George has already ordered this, ordered this truck, okay? And, and I, George came to the conclusion that replacing the CMV was more important than body cameras and replacing the unmarked. That was his, that was his conclusion, Lynn, all right? So, he knew, he knew that he needed to give up something, and that's, that's what he gave up. And I, and I know that, you know, flies in the face of city council discussion, uh, but I, just telling you the facts.
Yeah, I get it. And I think it's a good decision to, to do that truck. It's just the body cameras were something that specifically came up. So the fact that that is specifically being removed.
Yeah. I, I think, I think really, in retrospect, you know, really, we should have known, we should have known what is the cost of replacing the unmarked cruiser, and what is the cost of buying a CMV, and not have this, had that decision stand and make that decision as opposed to, um, body cameras being deferred due totally to the lack of, of an understanding of all of the numbers.
So basically, um, if the council, um, wants to restore the body cameras, then we'd have to five, find $5,000 elsewhere. Um, and most likely in the police department budget, and I don't know where that's going to come from. So, uh, that's, that's the, really, the choice. So, you're not making any motion on changing that, right? Okay, so, um, I need a motion.
You got one.
I got one.
I've got one in a second.
Okay, that's right. Um, all right, any other discussion on this?
I'll just make a comment that I, I see the police budget as 86,000, or whatever, 865,680. And how he divides the lines.
The "he" is me.
Well, you, or, you know, how you divide the lines doesn't matter to me personally, as long as the total comes up to no more than we've budgeted. So if he wanted to give up, if he wanted to keep the car and the body cameras, and he felt he could give up something else, why are, why do we need to decide that?
Uh, I don't think you do. But I can tell you that I think we, I think that you certainly don't want George going out buying body cameras when there really isn't enough money, money to, uh, to, to pay for them.
Yeah, I understand that. But it's like, if you had $10, and, you know, you want to give five of it away, and you want to do something else with the five, I'm just what, I'm asking a question more than, I want to understand.
As to why we're even having.
Why are we doing this, I guess?
Well, actually, we don't, we don't, we don't need to. It's just because, um, I think because there's a good amount of money involved, and we had to juggle around money that only we can do.
Yeah.
It becomes a part of the conversation. But, but in and of itself, no, it's not, it's really kind of none of our business. It's, it's up to the manager and the police chief to kind of determine that.
I think the reason why I think that we need to do this, Lynn, is that, is I'm, is I'm telling you that it costs $50,000 for the CMV. No question about it. 50 grand, all right? You're going to spend that. And what you don't want to do is, is buy, you need to be real careful with the other things. Like, if you buy the body cameras, you can't turn them back in, all right? You know that. So, I'm saying, I think that the, the message needs to be clear that the bottom line stays. And, you know, those are the only, I mean, I've gone down through this thing, and I, and I, you know, and I'm, I'm not ready to, you know, conclude, you know, you know, is there something else in here to find some money? I can't find it. Now, I will tell you this, is that if the city council, if the city council set, adopts this change, you know, there's, there's still $5,000 for supplies, equipment, postage, and there's $7,000 for uniforms and accessories. All right? Now, one of the things, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry I didn't mention this earlier. One of the things that George has in his mind is to wait for the 2019 VLCT passive safety grants. Those grants can be up to $5,000. So, one of the things, when we put this in the budget, it was about buying, you know, I can't remember if there was a grant involved. There might have been. It might have been a $10,000 purchase with a $5,000 grant. If I, I'm struggling with this a little bit.
I think you're right.
So, one of the things is, is I don't think that this is a mess, should be received by George as a message, that the city council doesn't support body cameras. You know, maybe he can figure out a way through some other grant, or really taking a good, hard look at this budget, and conclude that he can make that purchase. That's why I said, we're looking to defer, just being right up front with, with everyone, to defer the purchase of those body cameras. And I'm not saying defer until next year. I'm saying defer, defer, all right? And is, and I really think that as long as the message to George is, is that the city council still supports body cameras, and would support, you know, some other, uh, change in your budget to accommodate that. If you're open to that, that's the message that should go to George.
That's really my opinion, for you guys. I want it on record that I think that's an important part of his budget, and it needs to be addressed.
Any other comments?
May I ask a question? Is it appropriate?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. How many body cameras are you talking about?
One for every officer.
How many officers are on?
Well, there's, right now, there's, there's eight.
So are all of those eight officers on duty and on patrol at the same time?
Well, we would make a body camera, so the answer is no. Or, did you just ask, are those people all on duty at the same time?
Yes. And are they all going to be deployed with those body cameras all at the same time? I mean, is there a conversation that could be had about buying fewer body cameras and meeting your budget still?
There certainly could be a conversation about that, and we've had that conversation. And, and really, it's about whether or not body cameras are considered in a, ish, an issue, all right? Just like police officers are issued a gun, police officers are issued a taser, issued a radio. It's a bar, it's a part of their issue. Because there really is a problem, and I know that George would agree with me. If you have, uh, if you're, if you're, you're, it is important that the standard issue be done correctly, all right? And, and one, there is really something to be said, that when you issue a gun or a taser to a police officer, that police officer is responsible for that gun and that taser. The minute you start having equipment like a body camera shared, you got to pick it all up, and it's not part of the issue, it comes with, there's problems that result. I'm not saying that it can't be done, but we had that, we had that conversation and concluded that it would be preferred that it become part of the issue so that all police officers, when they come to work, have their body camera on.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So we move on to 5E, appointment of development review board members. And that will be moved to the next meeting. Uh, the development review board is going through the process of, of interviewing candidates and coming up with a recommendation for the city council, which will probably be available to us at the next meeting. So we move on to item 5F, appointment of recreation facilities and programs advisory committee. And I have, uh, two, uh, possible appointments, which would almost complete the, this new committee. Uh, for the school representative, the school has, um, uh, recommended Matt DeBlois, who is the, um, principal of the elementary school, uh, as the school representative. And the fourth, uh, resident, uh, member is Lynn Rappaport is, is being recommended. So, um, if you agree with those, then we would need to have a motion to appoint those folks to, um, the recreation advisory committee, which would leave, um, just the student representative. And once school is back in session, um, then there's an opportunity to find out who that would be. Uh, and we can, and we can appoint the, the student representative.
I'll make that motion.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Oh, and I, I probably should have asked Lynn ahead of time on this, but, um, when, when we do appoint the student in there, and we have a full committee, I would like it if you would convene the first meeting. Not necessarily be the chair, because the chair, I think, is selected by, I think we did it, the chair is selected by the, by the committee itself.
Sure.
Uh, but, but I think somebody needs to kind of pull them together to actually have the first meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a lot of questions for what you're pretending about. So, when are they going to meet? How often? No idea?
Nope.
They have to meet to decide when they're going to meet.
That's right. Okay, so we have, um, an item 5G, appointment of the delinquent tax collector, and, uh, the former delinquent tax collector. You still, you're still current.
I am the current delinquent tax collector.
Okay, that, that job, um, traditionally goes to the city manager. So, um, I think that we will need to appoint Matt Chabot as the delinquent tax collector.
Effective August 31st at 4, at 4:31.
I will make that move. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, second appointment, this is a real good one. Um, item 5H, appointment of the tree warden. Traditionally, the tree warden is the city manager, and therefore, this falls on, uh, Matt. Uh, he might have to establish a branch office to do this, so.
Well, I don't know. That was, that was, that was quick.
So, um, I need a motion.
I'll take the motion, to make.
Matt, the tree warden.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
August 31st, 4:31.
Can I rename the Lorax?
So, any, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item 5I, compensation to city clerk. Um, this along with evaluation of the city clerk will take place in an executive session at the end of the meeting. And, um, when we have done that, the actual setting of the compensation will be done in public session after the executive session. All right, so the new item is item 5J, reimbursement of deferred pension for the city manager. Do I want to take a crack at the first, uh, explanation of this?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so, what happened, um, Mel did a favor for us, I, I believe, um, in extending his working, uh, so that we wouldn't have to get an interim and so on. But what happened in him doing that is he lost his first retirement payment. Um, and, um, that amounted to $3,380.84. And, um, personally, uh, I, I don't think that for doing a favor for us to run this place, uh, until the end of August, should be a penalty to him, particularly of that magnitude. And so, what he would like to do is, um, his wife Lori is on our health insurance plan. And, um, and for her to stay on our health insurance plan for additional four months, and that comes out to $3,007.68. And that would be the repayment, essentially, the reimbursement of his loss, um, in his retirement, uh, by just the city continuing to pay Lori's health insurance for an additional four months. So that is what the proposal is. Uh, as I said, I, you know, I don't, I don't think he should be losing for what he did for us. Um, and, um, so if you, uh, well, somebody's got to make a motion, first of all, to do that.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to, uh, to do that. Uh, any discussion on this?
For that, the health insurance is extended for the rest of this calendar year.
Yeah, yeah. I'm on Medicare. I'm, I got looted, but.
Sorry. Four months adding up is till the end of December is what we're talking about. Okay, that's fine.
Yep. Any discussion? Uh, seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
And, we move on to item 6A, city manager's report.
Sure. So, uh, item A is about the, uh, the swimming pool budget report for the 2018 season. And, as you can see, uh, we got the numbers on the right side, for sure. So first off, you can see that season's passes were, uh, to, almost $2,000 above budget. Much credit going to, uh, another successful season of swim team, whereby every member of the swim team is required to have a pass. So, uh, a lot of that deals with, uh, the continued success of swim team. Uh, daily admissions, uh, $7,000 over budget. That has to do with the heat. Uh, lesson fees are down, and, um, I really, um, I can tell you that I've been providing some reports to Lisa Casey, uh, who's a member of the advisory group, and I think they're going to, uh, dig into the whole lesson program a little bit, and see, you know, why these numbers were off, and see if there isn't some way to, uh, improve that program, uh, financially. Uh, swim team fees, uh, as you can see, the, the $9,580 is what was collected against a budget of 2580. And if you take the swim team coaches and applicable social security and workers' compensation, you can see down at the bottom, refunded the swim team $1,244.53, which is in the warrant, and that check, uh, will be, uh, processed Friday morning. Uh, it can be picked up Friday morning. Uh, so, one of the things relative to the revenue, I have not had time to, um, and probably Joan hasn't had her time, the Thunder Care ISSP. Joan takes care of the ISSP program, which I'm sure she hasn't had any time to deal with yet. And the Thunder Care program is mine, and I'm going to, uh, I may end up training Karen on Friday to do both of those, Joan, so that you and I don't have to do either one of them. And somebody else will know how to do it. Uh, donations, obviously, the $2,000 is because I did only budget 2,000. Uh, although the Fishman family did donate $4,000 last, last year, there was not necessarily a commitment of that. So you can see that we still have other revenues coming in, uh, the door here, which is only going to increase that fund balance of 5688. Uh, relative to expenses, obviously, uh, workers' compensation, uh, there will be additional quarterly payments. Uh, if you're wondering why it's 2814, it's because the actual, the actual payroll last year for the pool was under our workers' compensation audit. Thus the, uh, just a very small expense. The, uh, chemicals, I, I'd actually thought, I'm going to go back and look at those numbers, because I thought that they were considerably, uh, under. Uh, but at this point, you can see we're a little bit, a little bit o, over. Um, electricity, there'll be one more month of, of, of electricity in August that will be charged there. So, I can tell you that the, the expenses, uh, the revenue picture is very strong. The expense, I think, once you, the insurances get paid and, uh, and the electric bill, I think that the, it'll be, it would not surprise me at all that we end up being over $56,000. But I'm very confident that you're not going to be in the, uh, in the red. So, that's, that's that one. Uh, the 2019 budget report, let me, uh, the last thing I did before I left work today, I reported to Joan, is if you notice the line item where it says property taxes, the budget of $1,889,263, that number was based on the grand list as we knew it at the time that you set the tax rate at 83.5 cents. Uh, the, uh, we, obviously, we tried to send somebody a tax bill in a trailer that left, a mobile home that left town in November, so that got deleted. Uh, but the, the BCA decision on the home that left town in November, so that got deleted, but the BCA decision on the Strong House Inn obviously resulted in a fairly significant change in that property tax bill, so my point is, is that the next time that you see a budget report, you will notice that the actual property taxes is about $4,600 less than this number here, so you're, sorry about that, Matt, the, so you're starting yourself out with a revenue problem on line one, just so, just so that you know. I don't really, it's, obviously, it's, you know, you're two months into the fiscal year, so, you know, it's really, we're way early to start drawing any conclusions from the, you know, from the rest of this. I will tell you that the, I did take the liberty to adjust the fire department revenues and the recycling center revenues, so for you, those of you that are, keep every budget report that I've ever given you as it related to this year's budget, if you recall, the whole Ferrisburg grand list number was changing, we couldn't get it and whatever, and I can tell you that when you adopted the budget, the budget is absolutely fine, all right, but the revenue part of this got, was not current when it was originally loaded into the system. Joan and I got the right numbers in, the towns, the contracts are all done and signed, and Joan billed them the proper amount based on the spreadsheet, and now the budget, you'll notice that the budget is right on, spot on, at 25%, maybe except for, except for Virgin's portion, but the towns that we contracted is at 25%. Likewise, somewhere along the way, the recycling program, I don't know where the dollar came in, but anyway, we got that to balance, too, so one of your earlier ones might have made some reference to such and such in $30, and now it's 29, so that is all good. So, anyway, I think that you're, I just wanted to report, report those changes, and again, it's just really too early in the, in the year. The next report, I actually, at one point, thought that I would write you up a new report for the current fiscal year, but I decided not to do that because I wanted to show you the year-end picture again, and let me just, I want to, if people could get their pencils out, there actually is one change as it relates to the water tower reserve and the water tower continuation, and the point is, is that the report that I gave you showed that the water tower reserve revenue was $103,674.78. And when I did this report for you, I decided that since 25% of that money goes into the continuation fund, that that is an expense, and so I included a calculation as if we spent $26,000, and I, and when I looked at that, I really felt that you really shouldn't be counting the same revenue twice, and so what I did is I redid just those, I redid just those two line items related to the water tower, so instead of $103,000 and some change, it really, that revenue for the water tower reserve should really only be 75% of that $103,000, or $77,756.9, and the expenses, the real expenses, since the revenue is being pushed to the, to the water tower continuation, those expenses are real expenses for, towards real projects. That number is $40,251.34. Leaving a balance in the water tower reserve is, those numbers are still good, all right? It's just that I didn't like this report showing the same revenue twice, and it's just the, one of the things that we do, the way that Joan do it, every time there is any earnings in the wa, in the water tower fund, we don't take 75 cents on every dollar and put it here and 25 there. We wait till the end of the year and move it all in one, in one chunk, and so that's what this, that's what that's actually reflecting. The next thing, dealing with the memorandum for the Phase 1 portion of Commodore Drive, I think it was actually last February when the city council authorized the acceptance of the Phase 1 portion of the roadway, and then when it was discovered that a shed may or may not have been on a portion of that right-of-way, I had no business getting involved in that lawsuit, and so that right-of-way was indeed shrunk by five feet, and so I had, when Matt prepared the deed, the deed was all prepared correctly, the shed has nothing to do with the city's 55-foot wide strip, and so that deed was prepared and has been signed and recorded, and Peter delivered a check for $11,220, Joan's got that in her drawer, and that is all outlined in this memorandum so that it's something that's not in my head, but rather clearly stated somewhere as to what the, what the deal is. Other topic of interest, let me give you a little bit of bad news. The city did not get awarded money from PetSafe for the dog park, so, so the moment of silence for the, for the, no dog.
I had the president bring me, he had done research on creating a municipal dog park and brought it into City Hall with colored pictures, and I was going to give it to the person that was going to run it.
Hold on to that. You know, one of the things, I, you know, I think Amy's aware of it, obviously, Steve Rappaport was my main contact, well, actually, Mark, you found this grant, but, but, you know, Steve.
So.
So, anyway, one of the things that I hope, you know, the dog park down in the Virgin's Falls Park is part of the Downtown Basin Plan, and so it's, this is a project that is clearly reflected in our plan, and what would be, and I think that this is a good funding source, you know, $25,000, and so one of the things that I explained to Amy, Amy Barr of the Virgin's Partnership, who did the lion's share of the work on putting this grant together, that, you know, what I, what I hope happens is that it's fine that the city didn't get funded, let's find out, you know, what did get funded and find out what, why were, why were we not funded, and so that way, they have these, this round of funding year after year, and so let's learn from this and see if we can't get a more competitive application in in a future year, so, and Mark should keep looking for dog park grants.
Find someone else.
So, the, on the good news is, is that delinquent taxes, I don't know if this is good news for Matt, for Matt Chabot or not, because let me just tell you, June 30th, 2017, 60 days into the fiscal year, we had $48,000 worth of delinquent taxes, which is not very good, all right, and so you want to improve upon that, and whatever you can approve upon that goes right to the bottom line in your fund balance, and as of Sunday, what the hell was I working on this on Sunday? My God. On Sunday at 5:28 PM, from my laptop at home, I sent this to the printer, the delinquent taxes on August 26th, and we actually have two more days to get to the 60th day, but the balance in delinquent taxes is $21,204.43, so that's good news, good news for me, all right? Good, good luck. Good luck trying to do better than $21,000, so, so obviously, with me only working, you know, a day a week, I'm not able to do everything that I really want to do for you all, you know, and so you're not going to know really what your fund balance is, but I can tell you that right there is some, that right there is some good news. We really haven't, we haven't received any surprise bills come flying in, you know, of any substantive nature. I mean, I, I think there was a $120 N9 bill that was for a lab test in, in June that should have been charged to last year. I didn't bother with that because I know that the auditors aren't going to regard that as substantive, so I really feel that the numbers that I provided you back when you adopted the budget and what you're using for, for your tax rate, you know, you're, they really are not, are not far off. They're not, not, they might not be the $150,000 that, when Matt asked about my gut, but it won't be too, it won't be too far, won't be too far off, so I think that's it. Matt and I have met today, one of the things that we talked about was the selection of the engineering firm for the wastewater treatment plant and pump station evaluation. I met with Rick a little bit, I think Matt tried to catch up with Rick today, all right, and so that still is, is marching along, and you'll have that selected soon, and obviously, you're under that 1272 order. The other thing, just so you know, that I've been trying to, the sidewalk project, I explained this to Matt, is my goal is that reimbursement number 15 is supposed to be completed by Friday morning, which is the final reimbursement on that project, so that that project is done, all the reimbursements, Joan gets a copy, and David Crawford will be, in essence, released from that project. The Flashing Beacon project, I, I, you know, it's not like I haven't been involved, I have been involved, but we've paid some bills, but there's been no reimbursements, and so I, David Crawford has been, been involved with that project, and so that's a, that's a project that, that sounds like something that you, like what you handed off to me, Randy, about a, you know, like a street skate project that's saying, okay, Mel, you need to go, you need to go get this reimbursement thing, so that's really what happened. So, the Beacon project is in place, it's happening right now, you see it up and down the street. It is a little bit complicated, but it's, it's a, it's a good one to get, get started on. You've got nothing yet, Joan, but, you know, as far as any reimbursement requests, but we know that the expenses to date are in the, are out of the right bucket going into this, so, so that's that one. I could go on and on, but I, I feel pretty, I feel pretty good, other than, other than the fact that I can't do this work in a day. It's really, that's, that's really the problem, you know, like when I come to work with three things that I want to do, you know, some days, never even touched, never even touched them. Yeah, never touched them, you know, so not everything's going to be done, sorry about that, but anyway, it's, it's been fun, and also, listen, I, I really appreciate the, I know that you all reached out of your own wallets for a gift certificate to, to Basin Harbor, and I wanted to tell you that I really appreciate that, and I do spend a lot of time at Basin Harbor and the mill, so that will come in extremely, extremely handy, so I just wanted to thank you all in person. I'm not good about thank you notes and whatever, so anyway, I really appreciate that, that was very thoughtful. Thank you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
I was going to say something a little bit later in my mayor's report, but I think I'll say it now. Of course, we, we had a kind of a going away thing, and publicly, it kind of looked like Mel was, that was his last meeting, but this is really his last meeting, so I just want to state again our appreciation. You have done some great service for this community for over 30 years. There aren't many people who can even come close to accomplishing the things that you have accomplished, and we will miss working with you, and we've relied on you, and we hope that Matt can pick up that very good record and, and strong management that you have done for the city. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, well, thanks. Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Yeah? Yeah, I probably won't be there.
Okay, we move on to the mayor's report. I have a few items. First of all, the Basin Task Force, I sent to the council, and I do have a few copies available if you, if you want to look at it now, but finally, I'm getting to having the charge for the Downtown Basin Master Plan Implementation Task Force, that's the real name of it, otherwise known as the Basin Task Force, and this really, this is a mayoral appointment committee, however, as I mentioned to you when I sent you the email, that, you know, if you would rather have it a council committee, that's fine, we can change this charge pretty easily if, if that's what you would prefer, and the, there probably will be a few more changes that I'll make on the charge, because when I reread it again, I saw a few things that I missed, but I, I want to start appointing people to this, and the membership would be one city council member, so think of which one of you would like to be the council member on this committee, one member of the Recreation Facilities and Programs Advisory Committee, because I think, obviously, the basin, with things that are going on in the basin, there's a lot of it related to recreation, so if we have a recreation committee, I think there should be some tie between the two. Two representatives of the Virgin's Partnership, and the reason for that, two representatives, is because if you look through the Downtown Basin Master Plan, it repeats the, the Virgin's Partnership as either a sponsor of a program or managing a program or doing this or doing that, there are many places within the plan that it refers to the Virgin's Partnership, so since the plan says it, there needs to be sufficient representation from the partnership to do that. And three, Virgin's residents having an interest in the basin and the Downtown Basin Master Plan. I have not contacted these people, but I think Kathy Rossier, who was on the original, original when we had the community visit committee, would probably be a good one, and Mike Winslow, also one of the originals, and I'm not sure who the third might be, but if you have any suggestions, let me know, because I'll be appointing folks to that so they can get, get to work. So unless you have any suggestive changes on this, we'll be proceeding with that Basin Task Force.
So will you have a task force set up by next meeting?
But, but, I mean, if you, if you have somebody you think that should be on that.
I just wanted to know what the goal is here.
Yeah, I'm trying to get it going as quickly as possible.
I would say that I had a lot of positive feedback from various members of the community that the recreation committee was going to be under open meeting law, so that we had appointed it rather than mayor, so that might be a good, to put this same task force in a more transparent, open structure might be appreciated community-wide.
Well, we can do that by making it a council committee that automatically puts it under the open meeting law, or I suppose, I could say, as I appointed the committee, that you follow the rules of the open meeting law, and, and they would have to do that. I could put it in the charge, so either way, we could do it that way, if you prefer to have it run that way, because that means they have to, they have to warn their meetings, they have to be, all be, all be public meetings, they have to keep minutes, there are a few regs that go along with that.
And I, having dealt with it for other things that can be a pain, but I just, I was surprised when I had people who I didn't even know, realized we were having a recreation committee coming, saying, so glad that that's the way you guys structured it this time. Okay.
I'd like to think about that.
Okay. Any other comments from the council as to how we want to do it? I'll still be looking for members, and they may even be, well, I, I'll appoint them in a meeting, in one of our meetings, and they'll still have, there's still an opportunity to, if you, if you want to have it under the rules of the open meeting law, then, as I said, we can do it whereby the charge mandates that they do it, or we can make it a council committee, either way. Okay, so the other thing that I have is just a comment about something that we probably should discuss at another meeting, and that is the South Water Street sidewalk. At the, towards the end of South Water Street, I think you all know that the sidewalk is in pretty bad shape, and so the question mark is, should we be rebuilding both sides with new sidewalk? Currently, there's a, there's a fairly good section that just has been rebuilt, or should we abandon the riverside sidewalk, which almost is non-existent at this point, and put all the money into really rebuilding the one on the other side of the street? And I think that that decision should be made by us having a public hearing and invite the neighborhood in so that they can make a comment as to whether we should be doing both sidewalks or one sidewalk, but I think that that is, we need to make that decision so that we can do the planning for either having a. for either having a company come in and do that, or if it's our own crew, what they'll be working on. So, think about that for, it'll, it'll probably be on the next meeting, not necessarily the public hearing, but, but to establish a public hearing for that purpose.
So, Rennie, one, one thing that probably would be helpful, and, 'cause I don't think that this was done, but the planning commission developed through much work by John Coburn, a complete inventory of all of our sidewalks and put it into a plan. I know it's on my computer somewhere, so I, one of the things that I think is important is that that get to the city council. I'm gonna say again, I, I feel as if it did get delivered. All right? So, I just think that, you know, let's, you know, just make sure that everybody has the, the document that was created, the bigger picture document for that thing. I feel as if, and I'm, it's absolutely fine to have, have public hearings about a project that's been discussed before. I think that the city council already took action, saying that they would not discontinue the sidewalk, 'cause the idea, there was originally a thought, I think I brought it to the city council, about discontinuing the sidewalk from, on the riverside of South Water Street, from Robert Street to the end. We're actually digging it up. And I think I brought that to the city council, because the sidewalk clearly in front of the Joneses' property was sitting there, and so, instead of us doing it. And so, the city council, the city council, I believe, directed me, which I directed Jim, to not, and I told Jim that they, that the city council does not want the, the riverside to be abandoned, all right? And that's okay, and so, that's why you see some of the work that you do. If you, if you want to revisit it, it's okay. I'm just, I want, I just wanted to give you that history, that we, we've, we fried one side of that fish already, and that's not to say that it can't be recook, put back in the microwave. But anyway, anyway, I just want to throw that out. But I do think, Shannon, it's important that the council take a look at that. And I, and I know that my wife really wants you to take a look at this, because I, hopefully she'll stop complaining to me about sidewalk projects, but one of the projects on there is to extend the sidewalk on Pan Road. I've never done it, you know, because it goes to my driveway. But anyway, it's on that plan, this is no pressure, I'm just telling you that, you know, you might be hearing from my wife.
Well, it might be a product of age, but I, I don't remember a discussion about Water Street, but at any.
Yeah.
You know? And, yeah, well, you can still decide whether you want to keep, keep with that decision or have a public hearing, invite the neighborhood in, and talk about it again. So, that won't be until some other meeting. So, with that, we're through the, all of the open items as far as the public meeting is concerned, so at this point in the meeting, I'd like to get a motion to go into.
Motion to go into executive session.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go through the whole thing. The motion would be to go into executive session under 1 VSA Section 313 F3, the appointment or employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee. And that, the discussions to take place are the, for the discussion of the appointment of an alderman to fill the vacant position, and to evaluate the performance of the city clerk and determine compensation. Both the appointment of the alderman and the setting of the compensation for the city clerk shall be done in public session. That's your motion?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded.
Amy, I want to.
Okay, I could, I can probably just hand it to you. Okay. And so, what we will do is, since you will probably be leaving, we, we just need to, just say what time, who made the motion to come back into public session.
Right, and then the action taken, and then adjourn the regular. So, who seconded that motion?
Okay, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are going into executive session. Thank you, folks. Okay, so, we're, we're back on, we're, so, we're out of executive session at 7:27, and we need to first have a motion related to the appointment of an alderman for the remainder of Matt Chabot's term, which will end in March.
I move that we appoint David Small to fulfill Matt Chabot's term.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And it was, let's see, Jeff on the motion, and who seconded it? Okay, then we need a motion for the compensation of the city clerk.
I move that we set the compensation for the city clerk treasurer at $60,000 per year.
Second?
Okay, Lowell again. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make said motion. I just like motion to adjourn.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, folks.